Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our council meetings will continue to be livestreamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, Mrs. Kell Smith, Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before a city council, and profanity will not be permitted. After you recall, please restate your name and you provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Not seeing Ms. Mullen, our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Hello?
Oh.
Hello?
Sup?
Hello?
We can hear you, Ms. Mullen.
Okay. Um, you're not the first person who too quickly tries to prompt someone when they haven't had the opportunity to complete the star six. It overrides you when you're trying to do the star six, just for your information. Davy Tree is not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Bon Air Elementary School building once was a shining example of what a city public school board could do. Well, they've chosen to squander the building, though, and the residents back at that time when it was built did not approve of anything but a school to exist there. As a matter of fact, it was said that they they went against the idea of an extra floor being added. We, the property owners, taxpayers, voters, and caretakers of our neighborhood are the real stakeholders. We say take the school down. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Greenpeace is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. This was read at my husband's funeral. Michael J. Mullen Reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire grounds. Mike knew most of his firefighters on the entire Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relatives, and friends. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituaries so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly punctual, and just and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Pennsylvania was one of the thirteen colonies, and they stood against the tyranny of England. I assure you that they did not think the people were childlike in their mentality and that they couldn't make their own choices. We do not consent to detrimental buildings remaining to decays the community we have built and maintained. There have been youth taken out of there in handcuffs at one point last year. Former mayor Caduto was defeated and left indiscreet. He appointed a panel that claimed the Bon Air Elementary School building should remain open.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, also connected to Bangkok, Thailand. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President, two thousand and twenty-four. czsii.rln.globalintelligence@gmail.com is my primary U.S. email. Vote by voter verification. Sex, Gen, Equality, and Justified Inequality Nexus and Uncensored Freedom of Speech and Public Comment are key to what I do. Concern of City Council, Pittsburgh, PA, is equity, and so sex, gender, equity. A concern that I have with the Global Intelligence Society, in fact, is anti-equity, so pro-equality in SG existence and pro-justified inequality due to SG competition and experience. By male, I mean a genetic XY individual. Female, a genetic chromosomal XX. The holy grail of transsexual, not transgender identity is to use the molecular basis of dimorphism to change the XY of an individual to an XX and an XX to an XY. Brittany Griner is a black XX female basketball player. Anyone here want to go one-on-one to ten against Brittany Griner? That would be a very difficult thing to manage. First time after her release from Russia publicly on court, eleven December two thousand and twenty-two, Griner dunked the ball. Brittany Griner is superior in basketball to over ninety-nine percent of the rest of us. This is justified inequality. Brittany Griner is one of the best basketball players in the world. That is her achievement as an individual. Is it because she's black? Because she is female? Escription? No. No, it is because she is Brittany Griner. They is Brittany Griner? No. She singular is Brittany Griner. On XX female-black race intersection, a black African female, on average, has an X chromosome gene diversity superior to non-black African females worldwide. Where does equity fit into this? No, it is justified inequality due to twenty thousand years of evolutionary competition. Black African American, black African women are winners, more so than any other females in the world. This is derived from Science for November two thousand and eleven.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ikahana Hal Malkina.
My title is Ikahana Hal Malkina, and the Grand Incas, the Iroquois Confederacy of Average Native American People. I'm speaking on City Council today in direct opposition to making the curfew enforceable. It is an economic challenge that we are facing in society today that is directly leading to the violence. It is a known fact that wherever there is poverty, there indeed will be violence. Many studies have proven this to be true, but we must employ different measures to help families where it really counts. Trade school implementation, I've spoken about this several times on City Council. So if you're looking to do something quickly, something new, something innovative, reinvent the trade school. Give these young people who are prone to criminal acts and deeds the opportunity, the new outreach, to make them aware of these trade schools and give them vouchers, if you will, to attend some of these schools and give them a direct path to success once completing some of these schools and implement them back into the schools that we once occupied, such as Knoxville Middle School. That was shrouded in trade. There's a woodworking shop inside of that school, long dormitory. I'm afraid that what you'll do by implementing this ten p.m. curfew is to force our children to flee from the police that they already fear. And we already know what happens when children and/or adults flee from the police. They can likely be shot in their back and still. And that's the last thing that we need to increase the probability that our children will be shot in their back attempting to flee the police. Their only alleged crime is that they are out beyond a curfew. And so I'm afraid that although I know everyone's looking for a way to to fix this violent thing, that this making people come in at ten o'clock is not going to fix the problem. Get in those schools, fuck overmedication these children with psychotropic drugs while their minds are still growing. And then they age out of school and then their their minds are already messed up because you feel that they won't sit still in school. And it's just a known thing, some children don't sit well in school settings. They need something more rigorous, a different style of teaching. They don't need to be labeled as a pension deficit disorder because they won't sit still in school. But I would look very closely at that formula because there's a lot of children who are on Britain who are aging.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Anyone with anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name and neighborhood. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at seven fifteen Mercer Street. That's up in the Hill District. Now, I protest because at ten, I mean at one fifty or before that, Mr. Kraus got up from the table and while they're talking on this television screen, he's talking to Ms. Strasburger. Then he leaves there and goes over here, talks to these three people here with the lawyer that you have that's supposed to tell him to stop it. He also was over there. You know something? Yins are reckless when you come to breaking the law. And these are laws that you wrote. I didn't write these laws. I've been coming here for twenty years, and I've been studying, watching the different ones of you that don't should not have been elected, but you were. And me, myself, I fought myself because you remember Mr. Kraus? When Burgess said that him and Lavelle should be president of council because they were black? Didn't I come and say, we ain't picking you by color or race? I said, we're picking you for what you've been through. And I think that Mr. Kraus should be the president because I know he suffered a lot. But then, once you became president, when you asked me to find you a lover, and I didn't, yeah, put your head down. Put it, no, put your head up and let everybody know. You asked me to find you a penis, I don't know whether it was black or white.
Ms. Brown?
Well, he asked me to find him a lover.
Enough, or I will ask you to be escorted out. Please keep it relevant to council.
But he can ask me to find him a lover? I'm asking you, can he ask me to find me, find him a lover? He's permitted to do that?
Keep your comments relevant to city council matters.
It is. I've come here to city council. I come here. I didn't ask him to anything about finding him anything. All I asked him to please treat us as we are human beings because we were talking about Jerry Jackson. I said, I knew the man. And I asked you, they hired you, they knew you were gay and alcoholic, that you said. And I asked him, I said, how can you not think about this man? And you told Tim Stevens to shut up, been a whole half an hour, and they were talking about the dead man that the police had killed, that the sergeant, I mean, that the guard had killed. Okay, so I'm not allowed to say anything that he's asked me to do. So he can go in the back room, or he can go out there at five-ten, that's where he asks me, asks me questions, but I can't say it. And you got the black man to say, all right, enough. But he asked me. I didn't ask him about nothing. I told him to please treat us as human beings, but I, oh.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that moves us on to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. Our first deferred paper is Bill six seventy-seven.
Bill six seventy-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Office of Management and Budget, the Department of City Planning, the Department of Finance, the Department of Innovation and Performance, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Public Safety, and the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to temporarily address the public health emergency of homelessness in the City of Pittsburgh and to revest for policies and programs to address the lack of affordable housing and their consequent contribution to chronic homelessness as directed herein until more permanent solutions can be implemented.
Motion to approve, brief discussion. Thank you. So I'm going to defer to our homelessness committee chair a bit, but members will notice that I did bring an amendment with me today. And I've talked about it before. We've talked about it in the committee. We did send it to members, and it's not very big change. And it's what we've been intending to do now for a number of weeks is to just add a few things that we know that we want to work on that maybe weren't in our first draft from the summer. So as the work of the committee has evolved and as we've had discussions with the administration, I think we're really all in line with realizing that the the gap in our social safety net in the city is in the transitional housing. Different people are using different vocabulary. I'm using the vocabulary of transitional housing. Sometimes people are saying kind of real housing, like permanent housing, but with twenty-four-hour-a-day supportive services. And so that's what we're what we we don't have when we have people just in tents and just we're just in overnight shelters that we realize we don't have enough of. We didn't have that in the first draft, so we're basically just kind of inserting that and then realizing that there's been, there are real opportunities to maybe purchase existing buildings that could accommodate these kinds of transitional housing or that there may be other agencies that we could partner with that that have the ownership. So it's basically just making those changes. So whatever is the will of the committee, if we want to amend and wait or if we want to amend and and take a vote today and kind of get this section of our work moving, I'm open to to discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you, Councilwoman Gross. I could see the amendments that you made, and they conformed to what we're trying to achieve, as you always are so diligent with legislation. Thank you for jumping in and making that change. I also want to thank the committee that we've been working very hard on some solutions, some recommendations, and, you know, we hope to have those, you know, not too distant future. And I also want to thank you, Councilwoman Gross, to convince me that we need, we don't, we don't need to hold on to this bill. I've been going back and forth thinking, oh, we got to have something done by the time this is up again. But, okay, so thank you for that. This is no longer hanging over our head. We will take our time and, you know, come up with our final product, but without, you know, prolonging this bill. So thanks again for your work.
Councilwoman Strasburger, I see your hand go up.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I'll start over. I'll keep it, I'll keep it shorter. I concur with everything that Councilwoman Gross has has drafted here and said, and I thank Councilman Coghill for his leadership. We truly need transitional housing. We also need emergency, emergency shelter space to be able to accommodate those who, especially in cold weather, are unhoused. But I truly think that the next, the next sort of area and our target should be, should be transitional housing. And so I'm glad that this bill now incorporates that, and I'm happy to support the amendment.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, I appreciate the time that, you know, you brought us together and we chatted about and explored different options and brought in some, some professionals to to kind of guide the conversation. And I appreciate the amendments. Looking forward to the next step, which would be, you know, what this bill lays out in terms of what's directed in here. And, you know, we all know, I think we all know that we can't do this alone. I think there's going to be further conversations with the county and what currently exists and how they support or fund transitional housing and how the city can be a bigger partner in that. I think we've seen many times where, you know, the city is the face of what's happening outside, and we continually, you know, are confronted in community meetings by constituents that reach out to us. And, you know, for, I mean, even currently, you know, the Allegheny County is, is the place that receives funding for, to solve issues related to homelessness. But, you know, what's what we're talking about here is, is just more than shelter, and there's also other components that go along, you know, in terms of whether there's mental health support onsite, and those are important steps that, you know, have to be available. I think oftentimes we look at people that are outside and you wonder, well, why can't you just bring them inside? Most of the times, it's just not the resources available, even if you did bring them inside, because others that are there maybe may not want to be there if there is some sort of unsafe situation if someone's not, doesn't have the right healthcare in place. So with that said, I'm appreciative of this conversation and looking forward to the next steps. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none, you want to make a motion, Councilman?
Thank you. Motion to amend Bill, well, we're on the bill, zero-five-nine-two.
Second.
Zero-five-nine-two.
It's the wrong bill number. It's an amendment by substitution. I'm just double checking to make sure what I have in my hand is actually the entire bill.
What bill number do you have? Could you please clarify?
Should be six-seven-seven.
I have, I have seen.
Oh, yeah, no, you're right. I flipped the page. Sorry. Zero-six-seven-seven.
I just want to make sure we're not amending the wrong bill.
Motion to amend by substitution, Bill zero-six-seven-seven.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion on the bill as amended?
I just want to say that I'm thankful to co-sponsor this with Councilwoman Gross.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Or sponsor it with her, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed that I actually am not a co-sponsor of this bill, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
You, Councilwoman Gross.
And just a reminder that we wouldn't have this bill in front of us to have done this work if Councilwoman Kell Smith hadn't initiated it earlier in the summer.
We work together, thank you.
Yep.
All of us. We're all doing, trying our best here.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill ten seventy-three.
Bill ten seventy-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with R.I.P. medical debt to purchase and discharge eligible healthcare debt owed by Pittsburghers as approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan at a cost not to exceed one million dollars.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second. Discussion, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members should have seen in their inbox and also was just shortly sent out previous to the meeting. And now also in hand, there is an amendment that I'd like to make to the bill. I'll make the motion in a second. First, I'd like to just explain the amendments. What this does, it neutralizes the bill and just removes, you know, removes the name of medical and just states that it will be a vendor that will be chosen by the procurement office, the procurement process. Speaking with, working with the administration, the law department, and also the procurement office, there is, you know, there's too much at, there's too much at stake here to relieve medical debt for individuals in Pittsburgh, for anything to get in the way of this being done the correct way. So with that, you know, we are looking for an RFQ process, looking forward to the RFQ process that the procurement office would take, take upon themselves to do, and looking forward to the, to the work that can be done by that vendor. And the, the other part of the amendments that you'll see have to do with individuals that could receive medical debt relief. Previously, we had individuals could receive it at four times the poverty rate, and we're reducing that to three times the poverty rate, poverty rate based on recommendations from our law department and with ARPA guidelines. So I think what's happened here is as ARPA spending has taken place and more guidelines have come out, it's more clear as to how we can keep the health of our city if, for some reason, there is some sort of challenge in the future. So I think that, I think those are two important amendments that, or there are several amendments here, but those are the two subjects that, that they, they, they cover. And, and I'd like to make the motion, so a motion to amend Bill ten seventy-three.
A second with discussion, please.
Let's stay.
Discussion, Councilman?
Yeah, please. I was going to ask the solicitor to come up if he would, but I think the councilman may have already corrected with his amendment, but please come up with his amendment, what my, one of my concerns is. The, there are very few, I'm sorry. You need to introduce yourself to the public. Daniel Creighton, Solicitor for City Council. So thanks, Dan. The, there are a few times in the, in the years that have been here that we have entered into sole source agreements. One of them, I recall, was the Responsible Hospitality Institute. Another one was with Citizens Police Review Board wished to engage in a sole source contract. I forget the exact name, but we put it forward as sole source. And so I was, my question was going to be around R.I.P. medical debt being sole source, or are we putting out a broad solicitation for people that do this? And I don't know how to ask that question better.
Well, as Councilman Wilson had said, the amendment here makes it a general RFP process. And it could very well be that there's only one person that responds to it or one entity that responds to it, in which case a process then will have been done to determine that that's a sole source. So that, you know, there's usually either a process and/or some kind of legal status that makes someone a sole source. So in this particular case, it's not like a patent or a copyright in which I'm the only holder. I have an exclusive license to do something, and I'm the only one that you can do business with, which is typically what one means by sole source. Although, that whole thing has been redone recently to make it a little bit more flexible, so I don't want to speak on the new sole source laws. But this is written in such a way that anybody who is in the business of discharging healthcare debt can respond to this RFP, and then from there, they'll make a decision as to who the ultimate vendor will be, and then that contract, once, you know, selected, will come to council again for a final approval to enter into with that vendor.
Mr. Chair, permit interrogatory? So, Councilman, that, you know this better than I do. Are they the only people that do do this? I'm just curious if we actually do have to do this or that we can actually enter into sole source with R.I.P. medical debt? We have done that in the past. It's rare, but we have done it.
So just for clarification, in speaking with the procurement office, the process will be an RFQ, so a request for qualifications, as opposed to an RFP process, because it, you know, it does, you know, this is, there is a.
What's that? That makes perfect sense.
Yeah. So that's quite different. I mean, although I'm not the expert on difference between the RFQ and RFP, you know, this would, would put out the, you know, who is qualified to do this type of work.
Okay.
So for us. So, you know, and for the, for the citizens of Pittsburgh. So this, you know, it's clearly laid out here what we're seeking. And so what would happen was the RFQ process would take place, and the procurement office would come back, and we would see a bill that would, you know, be the agreement bill that would, you know, we would authorize the mayor to go into the, or not go into the, you know, into the.
Agreement.
Yeah, into the agreement.
So that I'm perfectly clear, my, my position has, has not changed, but I do want to support the councilman in his quest for a request for qualification. So I will support the amended bill, but my thoughts haven't changed in the totality of it all. When it does come time for passage, I, I can't vote for it, and I shouldn't probably say that because something might change in that whole process. But I do want the councilman to be able to have his process by which we can, he can find out who actually does qualify to do this kind of work. So I will not stand in the way of that at all, and I will support the amendment.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
One in opposition, affirmative recommendation.
I want him to have his process, but ultimately...
That takes us to Bill 1114.
Bill 1114, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Brandy Bailey in the amount of $2,608 in settlement of a claim for damage to her parked vehicle near 2015-5 Raymond Street from a city public works vehicle on January 17, 2022.
Approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1115.
Bill 1115, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of John Connors and his attorneys, O'Brien Coleman &amp; Wright LLC, in the amount of $90,000 in settlement of litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to hold for executive session, please.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for executive session. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
Remove.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
Remove.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson, one deferred paper, Bill 592.
Bill 592, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning code Article I, zoning districts in general, Article II, base zoning district, Chapter 904, mixed-use districts, Article IV, planning districts, Chapter 908, public realm districts, Article V, use regulations, Chapter 911, primary uses, Section 911.02, use table in Section 911.04, use standards, Article VI, development standards, Chapter 914, parking, loading, and access, Chapter 915, environmental performance standards in Chapter 919, signs in Article VIII, review and enforcement, Chapter 922, development review procedures in Article IX, Chapter 926, definitions to create three new base zoning districts and other zoning amendments.
Motion to approve, discussion?
A second with discussion, please.
Question, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, please. And let's...
I was just going to defer to the councilperson, Strasburger.
Yeah, no, please do.
Yeah. That's my...
Yeah.
I defer.
I would like to defer to Councilman, okay.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So we, the intention will be to hold this for four weeks, which is right up against the deadline for action by council. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes that we as council have undertaken with community organizations and stakeholders in Oakland and the intention is to bring everyone together for a robust discussion to, if not make amendments or get on the same page, which is the hope in some areas here, similar to the way that we were able to come together on the actual Oakland plan, that there is very clear justification or rationale for the decisions and the amendments that we're making here. So that's the intention and I look forward to this robust discussion, which is yet to be scheduled, and then further action within the next four weeks.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, did you want to add anything?
I do. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So primarily, I wanted to recognize the work of Councilwoman Strasburger in assisting we three to navigate, you know, a very complicated, you know, complex situation. I had, I know the councilwoman is scheduling a series of meetings with stakeholders that were happy to be a part of and will be attending. I was sharing with the councilwoman earlier that I had, Bob and I had meetings with Oakliff yesterday. There was a great representation of constituencies from Oakliff. We met, probably better part of two hours to discuss their concerns. As soon as I get that together in my head and collected, I'll share with you what the thoughts are. The changes they were petitioning, I think, were reasonable and something that we could actually accomplish. And Elena, don't, please don't call tomorrow and say, you know, that we've agreed to do this. You know, I'd love, you know, but we're working here on it, so I promise. And, but it's all good. It's been a collective effort between all of us and I know we're going to come to it and I know perhaps maybe some might be a little bit nervous that we're cutting it close, but that's kind of what we do here traditionally. But we are, we are all committed to accomplishing this by the deadline, but having given it its thorough process, which it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I'll also thank Councilman Kraus and Councilwoman Strasburger for your leadership on this. Would you like to make your motion?
Yes, motion to hold four weeks.
Okay, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held four weeks. That takes us to our last committee of the day, Recreation, Youth, and Senior Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have one deferred paper, Bill 860.
Bill 860, resolution instructing the director of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Public Works to amend the rules and regulations for sports field permits to provide priority use to athletic organizations comprised of city of Pittsburgh residents.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Thank you. I will defer to the bill sponsors here, Council President Kail Smith and Councilman Wilson.
Councilman Wilson?
I'm going to have a very productive conversation with the, with the administration when I was president and also the Parks Department and also DBW. And so with that, we still need a little more time to make these amendments after that discussion. Motion to hold one week.
Second.
All those in, discussion?
Oh, I just wanted to...
Councilman Warwick?
Yeah, I said last time, and I just reiterate, that it would be nice to see something about youth programs also being prioritized in addition to just it being city of Pittsburgh residents, but specifically for youth sports. And I understand that there's an overlap with 18-year-olds and teams that have, but that seems like something to be figured out in the wording. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to hold? If not, all those in favor of a one-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held one week. That does exhaust our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, January 24th and Wednesday, January 25th at 10:00 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, next week, on Wednesday, January 25th, with sessions at 1:00 and 2:15, council will hold a briefing on the available operating budget grants. Is there anything else from members? Councilman Warwick?
Um, yeah, I do just briefly want to, the organization Pittsburghers for Public Transit will be reaching out to everyone on council soon with hopes to just sort of give us all a briefing on the situation of transit, you know, transit service is, well, there are lots of problems with our transit service right now and they would like to help council members understand exactly what's going on and exactly what our transit riders are experiencing. So when you get that, I don't know if they've sent it out yet or not, but when you get, when you get that invite, I really, really encourage each member to sit down and listen to what they have to say. Thanks.
President?
I just, on a personal level, I want to offer my condolences and I'll do a moment of silence next week for him, but Sam Palambini, who was the past president of Sheridan Community Council for years, for decades, he was my campaign chairperson. He ran the Athletic Association for Sheridan, did all the cleanups, participated in everything there was, 90 years old and was still volunteering for the community. And he passed away yesterday at the age of 92. So I want to offer my condolences to him, to his family and say what a loss this is for the Sheridan community and actually the region because he's done a lot all over the area. But my condolences to the Palambini family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes adjourned to meeting?
Remove.
Second.
We are adjourned.